We're discussing.
You could look a little left.
We're discussing the.
I know, we're. You guys are admiring yourselves.
Yeah.
I'm trying to start the meeting. The Written Inclusion Assessment Progress Report. Priti and Benita.
Thank you. I'm Priti Shwadar with the Executive Department and here with Benita Horn to give a progress report on the assessment that we've been working on, on our goal to build an inclusive city with opportunities for all. We had given an update to you during the council retreat on our program and what we've accomplished to date to, you know, meet this goal. And at that time, we had also stated that we wanted to take, you know, a more detailed look at our program, look at what we're doing, and see how we can continue to enhance our efforts. And for that, we've been very fortunate to get Benita Horn to work with us to do this assessment. Benita is here to do basically a three-phased assessment as well as a recommendation for us. Her first step is to do an initial review, kind of a 360-degree review of the efforts we have to date and what we're doing, and also use that time to focus and get input from various stakeholders internally within the city departments, council, staff, externally from both our stakeholders and our, you know, partners and key organizations, look at other cities to learn from best practices, and also look at our community members and people who are part of our, the fabric of Renton to get input. Her second focus is to do a much greater in-depth assessment, look at the systems that we have in place so that we can look at ways that we can build on this program to firstly develop internally training, again, sustainable training, and then finally come up with, you know, what we can do to continue to enhance our efforts for the long term. It's my pleasure to introduce you officially to Benita Horn today. Most of you have had the opportunity to talk to her. We're really fortunate to have Benita with us. Benita is the principal of her company, Benita Horn and Associates. And I have four pages to introduce her, so I'm not going to go all four pages to say, you know, the wonderful set of credentials and expertise she brings. But she is a keynote speaker, she's a facilitator, a coach, a trainer. She has focused on social justice, equity. She's worked throughout the United States, Canada, and Africa. You know, the companies that she's worked for range from private sector to public sector. She's been with Quest Communications, with the Washington State Minority and Justice Commission. She's done a lot of work for the City of Seattle for their Race and Social Justice Initiative. She's worked with, you know, City of Auburn, RACE, Renton Area Youth and Family Services right here in Renton. And she has also been the interim director for the Anti-Racism Training Institute Northwest. I think her best qualification is her smile and just the way that she's able to engage everybody and touch everyone's heart and really dive right into the work that she's doing for us. So it's really a pleasure and a privilege to have Benita here to share with us what she's gleaned in the last couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. So this is a progress report. We are just beginning in the assessment, and so I'm going to frame for you what we've covered so far and what's to come. So this will be first of several progress reports that you will be getting as we move forward on this. So Priti has just done an excellent job in covering the scope of work. And I just want to give you some background about why we started, but me to start where we did. All of you have been participants in an interview, so you have a firsthand experience and exposure to the questions that we're asking. And we're really starting with a more of a qualitative approach, doing interviews and focus groups to and within the city, internal stakeholders, which includes all of you and the mayor, and people in each of the departments, and we'll get to those in just a moment. But a qualitative, you know, there's many different kinds of assessments that we can do. Typically, we see a quantitative kind of assessment, like a survey, you know, tell us how you feel about dinner tonight, you know, one being you hate it, five, it was the best dinner you ever had. And the challenge often with the qualitative, there's, one is not necessarily better than the other, but the purpose of exploring questions in the qualitative approach is to give us data that we might not be able to get from a quantitative approach. And it also is mixed with several other forms of assessment. So it's about the whole picture and will give us information in addition to the other information we gain. So we'll be using interviews, focus groups, we'll be doing observations, we'll be doing some systems reviews, we'll be looking at historical accounts, visual context and text and so forth. So this is a piece of the assessment. The interviews that have been conducted to date have been primarily with internal stakeholders. And so that's what we're going to focus on tonight. Just begun to talk to our external, when I say internal and external, I mean within the city versus external is in the community. And so I've just begun talking to external stakeholders, and so I'll be prepared to give you a much fuller summary of what I've, the information I've gained at our next progress update. So so far, I have met with either personally with department heads and/or with the leadership teams in each department in focus groups, and you see all of the departments that I've met with, and of course, all of you as the architects of the, of our business plan, which includes the goal of inclusion. There, I also wanted, even though we're not going to go in depth on this tonight, also wanted to give you a sense of some of the external stakeholders that I have, excuse me, I'm sorry, my allergies are going crazy, some of the external stakeholders that I've already met with. So Renton Technical College, Renton School District, the Chamber, several human services nonprofits in the Renton area, some city board commission and committee members, some residents, representatives from the City of Redmond and the City of Tukwila. And, you know, I might say as I talk to some of your sister cities representatives, one of the things that they affirm again and again is how truly fortunate we are in Renton in that inclusion is embraced and supported at the very top of the organization. Not all of them have that same kind of support, and they consider that a tremendous asset and advantage to Renton. I also have upcoming interviews scheduled with additional residents, with our community liaisons, with additional city board commission and committee members, with businesses, nonprofits, and other government entities such as Seattle, King County. We've got an appointment pending with someone from the state of Washington and then other cities and so forth. We really believe that we, it would be, it's normally helpful but informative to find out what other cities are doing along that vein. There also is the strong belief that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And so the cities we've met with so far have been excited about meeting with us, wanting to do more of that, and actually, we'll talk a little bit more about that at the end, and wanting to exchange and share information and approaches. So let's just move, any questions so far?
Okay.
You'll let me know, right? Okay. So internal assessment, and these are the, I call them preliminary findings because this is only a summary of what we've gained within the city. So in the end, we will have a 360-degree view, what this, what people internal to the city feel we're doing to support the goal of inclusion, and what people, what the stakeholders who are external feel. So we'll have the whole picture. And I've used, I've taken some comments that are representative of repeated responses. So when you look at the responses, we'll see each one of these represents a multitude of similar responses. So as you saw, one of the first questions was, what does inclusion mean? And here were some of the responses, typical kinds of responses received, that everyone in the city feels that they have a fundamental and equal access to services, that we have a welcoming environment, so people feel welcome no matter what their culture or background when they do business with or interact with the city, that every single person is able to find a place, such as an entry point to access services, and/or a voice in the city, an opportunity to give input, making sure we're creating a city with no exclusions, that everything put out by the city is understandable to everyone on all levels, learning how to counter negative perceptions that people bring with them from other countries. And the next slide has some additional responses, that inclusion means the city's staff being more visibly and invisibly representative of the community. And this came up from almost every single department, I might mention, access for everyone by addressing and removing barriers to inclusion, that the makeup of boards and commissions are representative and reflective of the community, remembering that basically in Renton, we're all immigrants, that there is a strong history of immigration here, and it's woven over time, working through the dilemma of being inclusive and at the same time respecting differences, and then recognizing that that there are different definitions of inclusion. And many people are looking forward to hear from residents in the city to see what their perception is of inclusion as a test. Another question asked was, what are some of the tangible endeavors that you're involved in that support inclusion? And so again, some of the typical responses were that we do a lot of public education and outreach on various issues. One example, and there were many different specific examples, but one example was reaching out to the disabled community and providing ASL translation, that we open City of Hope, that there is the farmers market, WIC, we serve special populations like seniors, youth councils, home repair, board and commission training, scholarships, neighborhood programs, grants, community gardens. That the city's neighborhood program includes about 17 to 19 picnics each summer, and that each community is unique and distinct. They each have their own culture, so to speak, and some are more culturally diverse than others. That relationship and two-way communication with the city community has improved greatly. Another tangible endeavor was seen as the Community Liaison Program, which provides people in various communities with input from someone they trust or with whom they already have a relationship and a conduit to the city. That there has been some training, Dr. Caprice Hollins has provided some training, many people in the city participated in the exhibit and workshop tour, Pacific Science Center's Race Are We So Different exhibit. And at the June Quarterly Managers Meeting, which took place on June 12th, there was an inclusion workshop, which was co-sponsored by Priti and Human Resources and Community Services, and was a collaborative effort to really look at inclusion from another perspective. And so we used one of the episodes of the three-part video series, Race, The Power of an Illusion, and there were many learning activities in this three-hour session that supported that, and people left with a lot of eye-opening, so to speak. Much of what they learned from the video was new news to some of them, and so they considered it informative and appreciated the interactive nature of the session. So those were examples of, shared of tangible endeavors. In terms of measuring success, because one of the questions was, you know, how do you measure success? You know, if these are your tangible endeavors and you have this goal, you know, how do you measure the success of these endeavors? And I must say that this question raised a lot of questions and a lot of conversation with almost everyone with whom I taught. There were, there were debates about, well, you know, measurement, should we use a quantitative approach, should we use a qualitative approach? You see an example on the PowerPoint of some of the responses received, that a lot of the information that we regularly receive, we, those of us who work in the city regularly receive, has been anecdotal, customer complaints or compliments, but it has not been documented or tracked. So we know that we get that information, but we don't necessarily hold on to it or analyze it or track it over time. We would like to know for all the things we do, what is the return on investment? So, you know, how can we make sure that we're measuring and we're quantifying the outcomes and the impact of some of these endeavors that I just mentioned? There was reference to the fact that we do do an employee survey, citywide, every two years, but haven't specifically focused on goals relating to diversity or inclusion in that survey, and that could be another way of gathering information. That sometimes that we kind of operate on the no news is good news. So in other words, we looked, if we don't hear complaints, then we don't see a lot of diversity or harassment complaints, we assume we must be on the right track. Another way of measuring is, another thought about measurements is that if we look to measure, sometimes we're just, we get so tied up in marking numbers that we're, that we're at the expense of making real progress. So we'd want to, you know, be very clear about what we're going to measure and how.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Benita, can we go back to the no news is good news?
Yes.
Just for clarification purposes, are you saying that in terms of measuring success, that the understanding is that if there is no news, that could be good news?
Yes.
Okay. I would beg to differ with that, and from this perspective.
Mr. Taylor, can you speak into the mic?
Sure. I would, I would beg to differ from this perspective in that what I have, what I know from other conversations and other organizations is that sometimes no news, the absence of news isn't because it's good news. The absence of news is because maybe individuals don't feel as if bringing these complaints forward would matter, would make a difference. And so I wouldn't want to dismiss no news as good news as being, you know, the correct way of thinking about that. If there's an atmosphere that doesn't feel safe and welcoming as we're talking about inclusiveness, for an individual to come forth and feel protected and being able to vocally voice a complaint, then you won't hear it. That doesn't mean that there are no complaints that should be voiced.
You know, I, Councilmember Taylor, I totally agree with what you're saying. That coincides with my experience as well. And, and I really think that the question of, you know, how do we measure success was a stretching question for people in some, you know, for many people. And so this was a kind of out loud thinking that I heard, you know, how do we measure success? Well, you know, basically, you know, in a lot of, in a lot of different ways, we get signals that tell us if we're on the right track. But I didn't hear anyone say, there was more energy around, let's look at some different and improved ways of measuring, of measuring. Let's get clear about what we want to measure. Let's get clear about how we want to measure, and let's do that consistently. So that, I really saw that as an opportunity. So I didn't hear someone saying, you know, no news is good news, and that's the way it should be, but, you know, this is what we've used as a signpost, what would work better?
And I would hope that what we're really going after is wanting to know these hard answers to some of these questions. And our workforce is not the most diverse. We're about 11% people of color in the city, there's 51% people of color. So that in of it, in and of itself lends one to wonder whether or not there would be an opportunity for someone of color to feel safe coming forward to voice some kind of complaint. So again, the absence of no complaints, in my mind, doesn't dismiss this as all things are running smoothly and okay. It's a matter of whether or not people feel safe enough that they can come forward and that they will be heard and listened, and the appropriate processes will be taken.
Benita?
Yes.
Hi. I, so I hear Councilmember Taylor's coming from, when you were reading this, I was seeing this more as a past tense question, and you were stretching them to go to what they would want to do in the future. Am I wrong on that?
No, this was more of a past tense question.
Okay.
You know, what, in what ways have you measured the success of your endeavors? And I think that as a consultant, I simply say, I guess my bottom line would be, I see a lot of opportunity here.
Okay.
And we're going to, you know, I'm going to talk more about that at the end when we look at, you know, what next. But I really see opportunity. I think that, that there, that people are, you know, what I heard in general is that people would like to be able to, in some way, tell, for example, if we've been supporting a certain program year after year after year, is it really accomplishing what we thought it would do? You know, we think it's good, what is the impact? Is it accomplishing its goals? If we have something in place that is supposed to, you know, nurture and inform members of the community and encourage them to interface with the city, you know, isn't, in fact, is that what's happening? So I think it was, it was a question that was well-received, and I think the responses were more what people have said, you know, this is the way we have done it, not necessarily the way we should be doing it.
Okay.
And we'd like to explore some different ways of doing it.
Okay.
But that's, that's another path of the process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right.
So another way that success is measured is by customers, or proposed to be measured in this case, was through customer service feedback or perhaps reduction in response, reduced response time as, as staff are responding to customer requirements. There was a need, you know, a lot of questions about clarity on what is measured, how it's measured, why it's measured, so that people are clear on that. There was also, you know, a question about, well, you know, we don't necessarily pull data together by language group or cultural group or race group, and why that not be intrusive to people to do that? And, you know, and we talked about lots of different ways, some ways that I'm familiar that other cities are doing, that does not necessarily attach people's name to the data that's gathered, but the data is still gathered. So the city has a sense to see who they're, who they're connecting with, who's really doing business with the city. And that, and another way of measuring is that we have more positive feedback than negative feedback. So fewer angry customers, positive anecdotal information, fewer upset calls to the mayor's So as your consultant, here's what I, my preliminary thinking, initial thinking on support that may be needed as we move forward with inclusion. And some of this came from the departments, and it's coupled with my own thinking as well, based on my experience in this field. I think, first of all, addressing the perception that the goal of inclusion is so large that barriers surface more easily than solution. I, you know, I really got, truly got the sense that some people feel it's a big piece. There was no hesitation when I asked people to define what does inclusion look like, and these were big monumental pictures. So when I say that barriers surface more easily than solutions, for example, in community engagement, when they talked about, you know, really wanting to see that everyone reflective of the city is involved with us in many different ways. You know, barriers were cited often, such as language, that people don't come out, that there's limited staffing for outreach and engagement. Almost every department said that they really would like to see their staff be more reflective of the community, and when they begin to talk about recruitment barriers such as diverse applicants don't apply, that we have civil service system restrictions, that we, that language may be a barrier, we need applicants who can communicate with all of the people in the city and the people they serve, that we have long-term people, employees, that people come here and they stay here, and so we don't have a lot of turnover. And then that coupled with recession and layoffs. And I don't think it was so much as making excuses, simply, I think it was the sheer magnitude of what do we want to do, that it was easier to see why we're not there than what we could do to get there. That makes sense?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, it does. And one of the things that I'm hoping that we do is that we, this is, I'm first and foremost pleased that we're doing this. This is good. This is a conversation that we need to have, this is work that we need to begin, and we need to really lean into it. One of the things that I researched when I, when I, when I heard that people who are working for the City of Renton, that they, they don't leave, is I went back and I, to some of my sources to do some research. I went to the Census Bureau, I went to the King County Demographer, and I wanted to know what the City of Renton looked like in 1990 in terms of its diverse population, and the year 2000, and I know what we are in 2010. And what I discovered was that in 1990, the City of Renton was 18% people of color. And in 2000, we were 33% people of color. We had an African-American population of about 5.6% in 1990. And in 2000, that was about just under 7%. So the notion that we just became diverse all of a sudden is inaccurate. We've always been very diverse, but yet we haven't figured out how to create a diverse workforce. So I'd like to dispel the myth that, you know, somehow we've hired a lot of people that just haven't left the city, because that's not accurate. When we go back and we look at, you know, how we've hired, I would like for us to challenge our hiring process and to take a look at that so that we can figure out how to create more inclusive opportunities to create a more diverse workforce, and to use real factual data in making those decisions and creating those processes.
And that is one of, this information that we're gathering is leading us to that next step of doing a really very detailed systems analysis, so looking at what are systems we have in place, again, both for internal opportunities as well as external opportunities that we can, you know, make changes, whether there are some of them that, you know, the simple fixes or others that need more work and more efforts to, to be able to, you know, again, continue with our goal and enhance our efforts.
So address, so that was one of the areas, it's one of the areas definitely where I feel support is needed. Training and education, whatever has been provided has been welcomed and looked forward to, but what I heard was, we would really like to see it ongoing and consistently. Measuring success, primarily there just some, some research and some thought, a thought process about clarity, about what is it that we really want to measure, how do we want to measure it, that we do that consistency, consistently, and that we start from a benchmark. Now, we'll have somewhat of a benchmark by the end of this process, at least, you know, where we, a snapshot of where we are to date, and that may help, but it may not cover all of the areas, and so that will have to be determined. Another area I think where support is needed is just simply making the walls between the departments more permeable. An example that surfaced for Priti and me as we were talking to the departments is that several departments are exploring the possibility or would like to use a language line for translation services, which would give them immediate, real-time translation as they interface with residents. And two departments already have access to and are using it. So again, I think that there are opportunities, as those walls become more permeable, for some of the city's best practices to actually be surfaced and amplified that are already embedded in different departments in different ways. embedded in different departments in different ways. And those can be shared on a broader perspective. And the other area where I see support is needed is, just as Pretty mentioned, taking a systemic approach, you know, identifying systemic barriers. And I think this is another opportunity to engage community members in a collaborative approach to identify and remove them. There certainly has been a lot of energy, positive energy expressed by community members who've been, who I've interviewed to this date. So systemic endeavors that are underway, and underway may be a stretch. It's like, the thinking is there, the thought process is there, some research is there. One is a systemic approach to diversify the applicant pool. You know, you know, taking, doing strategies such as, I know that the city has already begun to do some succession planning. So analyzing openings over the next few years, you know, building relationship with strong referral sources, responding to requests from, from partners, partner organizations, such as, for example, both Renton Technical and Renton School District would like to see opportunities to partner with the city in perhaps creating opportunities for their students to, excuse me, to do shadowing, to receive mentoring, to perhaps do internships. And at the same time, that is building a pool of potential future applicants for the city who are somewhat familiar with and know what opportunities exist here. So it's a long-term source pool, but, but one that generally, in my experience, has proved to be very rich. The idea of having a local job fair resonates in the community. I, I know that that's been kind of a gleam in the mayor's eye, but I also know that specifically to date, Renton Technical College, the Chamber Puget Sound Training Center, and Renton Area Youth and Family Services have already stepped up and said, we would like to participate with the city in making this happen. So there's a lot of energy around that. Renton Technical even is looking at space available that they can offer as a site in the third, the first quarter of next year. Another systemic endeavor underway, and it's part of our next phase of the assessment, is really looking, using an equity lens to review policies, programs, and practices. And I think that will get directly at what you mentioned, Councilmember Taylor. You know, what are the systems today? How are they being used? To what extent are there inadvertent or unintentional barriers to inclusion that we just don't see because we've always done it that way?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you for that. I was looking for that language, you know, the word equity, that's important. And I think it's also important that as we use that language with people at home, that we make it clear what that really means. And I know you know what that means, as you've done the work with Seattle and their Race and Social Justice Initiative. And it doesn't mean equality. It simply means that...
Yeah. It, it means that we, two each according to their needs. And as a matter of fact, that was one of the topics of discussion at the quarterly managers meeting, is that we had a conversation talking about the difference between equality, which is kind of, you know, a paradigm that a lot of us have been socialized that should be our goal, and equity, and the difference that means in the outcome.
Exactly. And then, so what that looks like is that, you know, in fact, I think I saw a little picture you had that showed the different levels, but it simply means addressing disparity, okay, and compensating for the lack of opportunity that a certain group or individual had versus another group. And so we're not, the goal isn't equality, the goal is making sure that everyone gets what they need, which means going back, taking a look at unfair policies that may have created an uneven playing field for some individuals.
Absolutely. And it's really looking at the whole picture. You know, I'm encouraged by the fact that many of the school districts right now, for example, you know, for years, they used the term achievement gap. And that was, let's close the gap between kids of color and white kids. And today, most, more and more enlightened school districts, including Renton School District, are using the term opportunity gap, because what they're saying is, none of the students are where they should be. Some need more support than others in order to create that level playing field, but let's not exclude anyone. So if we just close the gap between the best and the worst, that still isn't positioning all of our students where we, where we know that they can see their full potential. So there's a lot of, so that would be part of the next phase. We're looking at systems that have been surfaced in conversation to start with in the initial assessment, such as outreach, recruitment, hiring. Those, those have come up again and again. Education, education for all staff is one of the systemic endeavors that, that has really been requested again and again, as we've met with the departments. And they would like to see it consistently. They would like to see it ongoing, to know, you know, what, when opportunities are going to be there, so that they can schedule that for their staff. And also to do it in a way that builds capacity within the city, so that they're, they're not entirely consultant dependent. And then, and then lastly, exploring expectations, building a support network, exploring expectations that both the city has and that city partners have for new opportunities. So for example, when we met with the City of Redmond, they would like us to engage with them in convening all of the cities in our region, to come together, to do, to exchange goals. You know, what, what are each of us doing around, you know, racial equity, equity, inclusion, diversity, whatever the guiding terminology is? You know, what progress has been made? You know, what are ideas that can be shared? And, and so the other, we've talked to two other cities so far who are extremely excited about that, both Taquilla and Bellevue. And, and so we're going to be looking at strategically, how can we build a support network that not only furthers Renton, but also furthers our region?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Vanita, to my knowledge, the foremost municipal, or, or, the foremost leaders in equity work right now is King County in their Equity and Social Justice Ordinance, and Seattle in their Race and Social Justice Initiative. Are we looking at those two organizations? I know that there's, I know Bellevue's got some things going on, and I, and I hear of other things, but nothing as significant as what the City of Seattle is doing and what the county is doing.
Yes.
So I, I hope we're not ameliorating their presence doing this work, because they're the foremost leaders in this. And we can learn quite a bit from them.
Not at all. As a matter of fact, we're waiting to hear back now from Patricia Lali, who is the Director of the Seattle Office for Civil Rights. We had an initial tentative meeting scheduled with her, and then, I don't know, you may have heard that the, that Glenn Harris, who for years has been the Race and Social Justice Initiative Manager, just accepted a job in New York. So she's kind of got a lot of things going on in her department and begged a little more time before we met. We're gonna be meeting with her, we're also gonna be meeting with her staff, who sponsored the first community-wide Race and Social Justice Survey, to see what is the process they used for that. And then we're also talking to Matthias Valenzuela and Paula Harris White at King County. As a matter of fact, we found ourselves in the same forum with Matthias just recently when we went to the Health Equity Forum, and so, for King County. And, and so they're also on our contact list specifically. And we have approached them already about what we can...
And to add to that, Councilmember, King County Councilmember Larry Gossett has actually invited me to meet with him, and also obviously for us to learn from their efforts, but interestingly also to learn about our program, because that's something that he has heard about and found out about, both in Portland and in other places, and is very interested to see what cities are doing. And so, yes, we, when we say we're building partnerships, we're looking at everyone in the region, we are looking at, you know, different cities. But there certainly is a lot of value and opportunity with some of our cities, especially some of our neighboring cities, because a lot of our community members and residents, especially those, you know, that bring, reflect cultural or ethnic diversity, don't necessarily look at the geographic boundaries of cities the way we do. They look at the region, they look at where they live, they look at associations that they may be part of, or, you know, faith organizations, which draws in from more than just one city. So for us to be able to, again, build partnerships with our organizations and our cities and approach this holistically helps us also better leverage, you know, both the resources and have a common front with our residents as well.
And I'm hopeful that we can take a look at the track record. The county has been at their work since 2007. I think Seattle is about the same. Both of those programs, or both of those initiatives and ordinances have been successful. And Seattle, for example, has a population of 34% people of color, yet they figured out how to hire 36% people of color. The county has 34% people of color, and they have figured out how to hire 34% also. So there, there are some, there's a track record there. And my research and all of the surrounding South County cities is similar to our numbers in terms of what we have produced, which, you know, with the City of 51% people of color, we're at 11. So I'm hoping that we, we focus on, on, on some proven success, track records, they've got some lessons learned that we can look at, as opposed to some of the other smaller cities that are just beginning to start this process, so.
Absolutely. And if I may add, and I think what we have to share, because that's one of the areas that we focused on, is our external outreach and engagement, because that's one of the things that they look at us to see. You know, how have you achieved what you have? How have you integrated this into a lot of your programs? So it's a great sharing, great learning for us to look at our systems, look at things that they've done, and at the same time, be able to, you know, share our story, because we do have a story to tell. We have had success, we have done a lot, and, you know, I think that that's something that people are listening to and seeing as well.
Go ahead, Vanita.
So the last slide, this really summarizes next steps. So this will give you an idea of what we'll be coming back to you with. We are gonna continue the external assessment. We had great luck in, in, in meeting up with some of you at some of the neighborhood picnics, and just simply talking to residents. And it's amazing, no one has ever said no, when I've gone up and said, I'd like to talk to you about the city's goal of inclusion. So doing that, and then also getting some great resources from those that we've talked to already. We'll continue that. We're going to look at assessing the existing infrastructure for inclusion, and that's using some, an equity tool that we talked, excuse me, not, not equity tool, but looking at what exists today within the departments to support inclusion. And so that we have a sense of what's already in place. And then we're going to conduct a systems assessment using an equity lens, which will give us a clue on whether there might be inadvertent barriers. We're also going to research best practices and, you know, really look to those who've been involved in equity work the longest, and in a lot of different ways, both in, in practices for addressing some of the barriers or challenges that are identified in Renton, or opportunities is actually the term that I prefer to use, and to research best practices that would help with the foundational education curriculum that would be available to every employee in the city, and hopefully all of you, to provide recommendations and a roadmap. So some kind of overarching map that shows how the endeavors in each of the individual departments really come together and enhance and support each other in meeting the overall goal. I, I put the, that symbol that you see up there at the top is a mythical bird from the Akon tradition of West Africa, it's called the Sankofa. And I really like using that symbol when I'm doing assessments, because they, in the, the Sankofa tradition, it encourages people to look back at their experiences, stories, and histories as a basis for moving forward. And I see that that's what we're doing at this point.
Any other questions from council?
Just a comment. Thank you for this presentation, Vanita. I've, I've waited for us to move in this direction, and I'm happy that we're doing it. And I hope that we just really, you know, courageously pursue the next steps, getting into the assessment. And I'm, I'm sensing that this could lead to a conversation, perhaps, that would seek to find funding for some of these elements that you would bring back in form of recommendations?
That could possibly be the case. And, and I think that that's something that, of course, would come to you all as a body to make the decision about that. But I think it might be well to start thinking about that, you know, as, you know, in the process. There are resources that I think would help move Renton to the next step in a more effective way. And so we are, when we come back with the specific, when I come back with the specific recommendation, we'll also have done some research and have some specifics about what that cost might be, so that you can make an informed decision. But I would really like you all to kind of keep the door open on that one.
And also, you know, as we've been talking and building our contacts and relationships and giving presentations about our efforts, there are grants and other opportunities that are available. Again, that takes effort and time to find out what the grants are, what aspects we would be eligible for, apply for it, and get it. But it's there, and that's another thing that, you know, we've kind of started those conversations, and maybe, you know, individually as a city, or more likely in partnership with some of the other organizations, we might be able to avail of some of these grants. And there's a program, for instance, in Taquilla that is using grant funding and is doing a phenomenal job in terms of reaching out to some of the cultural groups. And I have a meeting set up with some of the groups that are helping, you know, take them to that next step next week. So these are the things that we are really exploring this from every, every dimension, and very cognizant of the fact that getting the right resources will be critical for the sustainability of everything that we do.
Well, Vanita, thank you so much. I think the one thing that Pretty failed to mention is that you're a Renton resident.
Oh, yes, I am.
Oh, this is home. So you're working in your backyard.
I have a very deep heart connection to the work that I'm doing with the City of Renton.
It's been great seeing you here at City Hall and out in the community as well.
Thank you.
With that, Vanita Hall is closed.
Thanks.
Thank you.
... request that most inspires you with a donation of any amount, and donorschoose.org delivers the materials to the school...